Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting for July 18th. I want to call the meeting to order and let's ask the clerk to please take role of our board, please.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, the second item on the agenda is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Anybody have any comments? It's been moved.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Any to the negative? Hearing none, item passes. Item three is approving the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency Revised Payment Standards, Board Communication Number 22-325. Any comments, Board?
I'll move approval.
Second.
I'd just like to say I'm happy that we are increasing this so we can help out people with higher rents that are happening.
I think everybody can vote by pushing their buttons, I hope, except for me.
We'll say seven.
Yeah, let's go with seven yes. It looks like everybody else voted. My button is not working.
Uh-uh.
All right, next item, could we have a motion adjourned?
Move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Sounds unanimous? Thank you, this meeting's adjourned. We've got a very special proclamation which I'm going to come out front. Do we have, well? The police?
Oh, it's way down.
A and B, so this is. So we have a event that everybody, certainly our Des Moines U of D and our city council members. Indelie spent some time out, it's visiting with our neighborhoods and our residents around the city and celebrating National Night Out. You want to step up and have a couple of things to say and then I'll read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing prepared other than it's a thrill to be actually out in the neighborhoods after a couple of years of pandemics and it's a great celebration of neighbors looking out for their fellow neighbors, their friends, et cetera, keeping the neighborhood safe in the city of Des Moines. So appreciate the proclamation.
And appreciate all your work. Why don't all you guys come up here? Come on, guys and gals. Let's, now you can be on both sides.
Yep, got it.
So our proclamation reads as follows, whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring the 38th Annual National Night Out event on Tuesday, August 2nd, and this is the 33rd year that Des Moines has participated in this nationwide event. And whereas the Des Moines Police Department, neighborhood groups, businesses, and concerned citizens work together diligently throughout the year to prevent crime using sound community policing strategies, and whereas neighborhood awareness, spirit, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out project and are key components in fighting crime and crime prevention. And whereas National Night Out provides an opportunity for Des Moines residents to join together with thousands of other communities across the United States on the same day in support of safer neighborhoods and to demonstrate the value of cooperative crime prevention efforts. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our residents, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, as National Night Out and call upon our residents of Des Moines to recognize and participate in this special observance. Let's give a great big hand to our.
Tighten it up.
Do you want to close your eyes?
Acting like you like each other.
All right, we were quick. Sorry to keep everybody on the edge of your seats. I know this is an exciting event, but we're not to officially start until 5 o'clock. So we've got about five minutes. Everybody kind of relax, deep breath, you know.
That doesn't look like my hand, right? I'm not that interested.
We were quick. Sorry to keep everybody on the edge of your seats. I know this is an exciting event, but we're not to officially start until 5 o'clock. So we've got about five minutes. Everybody kind of relax, deep breath, you know.
That doesn't look like my hand, right? I'm not that interested.
All right. We've got one of our new, actually the new civil and human rights director, I think, here, and I'd like to have her stand up and Scott, do you want to introduce her? Mitzi? Where did she go?
Actually, if you don't mind, we'll give her a second to come back in.
Mitzi!
It's time delay, she can't see it yet.
All of Jesus. So, yes, Mayor and Council, I think all of you have had a chance to meet with Mitzi, but we thought it'd be appropriate to bring her forward for the public to be introduced to Mitzi as well. We've had her in a couple media outlets as well to get out and be introduced to the community. So Mitzi, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and telling the public a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm really excited to be in front of everyone here. I have been here about two months now and I'm slowly trying to get to know folks in the community. And so looking around, I'm sure there's a lot of faces that hopefully I'll be able to meet with, one-on-one with you and your organizations. So I am looking forward to that.
All right. Mitzi, congratulations. Good to see you here.
Thank you so much.
Well, congrats.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, let's call our meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Let me see, let me borrow your, on the consent items tonight, those are items three through 48. 4B, 4Y have both been withdrawn, the inspections are incomplete. Item 37 is corrected, roll call. Regular agenda items, 49 to 67, 56 was corrected and to continue to August 8th of 2022 at 5:00 p.m. 56A and 56B are withdrawn, those hearings are going to be continued. There is an extra item directing the city attorney to research and provide counsel confidential advice regarding the legal ability of the city to regulate certain home-based sales and sponsored by myself and Mayor Pro Tem Mandelbaum. So, anyway, Will, those are the items and unless anybody has anything else, I would ask for a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
I think it's unanimous and clerk, my button is still not working. Okie doke. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight, those are items three through 48. For everyone watching all that, item five, I vote no. Item 20, council member Gatto wanted to pull, but do you need to pull that anymore?
No, no.
Okay. Item 25, council member Shoemaker votes no. Item 31, council member Shoemaker wants to speak. Item 32, council member Mandelbaum wishes to speak. And item 37, council member Gatto votes no. Anything else, anybody?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Ask everybody to vote. Vote is seven yes. I vote yes. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
All right, that takes us straight to the hearing items.
Would I be able to speak on 31 before the hearings just to, just make a statement and then? I didn't want to pull it to make a separate vote, I just wanted to make a statement.
On which?
On 31.
Well, we've already said that you're going to pull it, so if you'd make a, we'll make the statement that, let's just, let's get done with the hearings and then turn.
I don't want to hold people here too long who are waiting for that.
Okay.
Reconsider.
Okay, you suggest that we reconsider then?
While we can actually consider the rules, hearings come first unless you decide to have them, take them in a different order. So you could take this one, there are people here waiting if you decided to.
Council member Shoemaker wishes to reconsider the vote and would like to present item 31 at this time. Is that what you want to do?
I think we were just going to consider item 31 before the hearings and then move to hearings. Is that what Jeff was saying?
We already approved it, you have to, we'll have to reconsider. We don't have to.
No, it was pulled and I didn't want to pull it, I just wanted to make a statement.
She pulled it off, so it hasn't yet been considered.
Yes. So we're just going to do 31 ahead of the hearings.
The question is, do you want to go out of order?
It's not pulled off, or did I miss it?
Yes, it wasn't on the sheet, yeah. I talked to the mayor about it.
Now it's 31.
It came in late.
Didn't see it.
The mayor announced that it was pulled.
So she would like to have that particular item because there are members in the audience who are present.
Sure.
And just quickly consider that at this time.
All right.
Wait a minute, we got to.
I'll second it.
Okay. Are we reconsidering or are we just going out of order?
Okay.
So then we don't need a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You just need to read the item, Your Honor, and then.
There we go.
Okay. So item 31 is approving items regarding 1714 Sixth Avenue. A is approving the preliminary terms agreement with Ashworth Development LLC for the construction of a four-story, 32-unit mixed-use project. Council Communication Number 22-346. And B is approving an economic development grant to match funds in support of the center at Sixth Non-Profit Innovation Fund Grant Application. Council member Shoemaker, to you.
All right, I just wanted to say that I am very excited for this project on Sixth Avenue. It's going to be a black and brown business incubator. It's going to bring something wonderful to this corridor that we've done a lot of work on. I think it's a wonderful cause, so I'm very excited for it to move forward and for us to be supportive of that. And with that, I would just move to approve item 31, A and B.
Second.
All right, ask everybody to vote. I vote yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you.
All right, item passes. Thank you all for attending on that one. We will now move to the hearings. First hearing item tonight, of course, will be item 49. And quickly, for the hearings this evening, we have six zoning items, those are 53 through 58. We also have several vacation hearings, a conveyance hearing, one lease purchase hearing, one public improvement hearing, and a couple of other hearings. As a reminder, for the zoning items only, which are again 53 through 58, we will hear the parties in interest first if they wish to speak and then the general public. The parties in interest for the zoning items are the applicant or somebody that lives within 250 feet that has received a notice from the city. After all the parties in interest have commented, we will then open it up for any member of the public for germane comments to aid in the recognizing of the parties in interest who may speak on the zoning items. I will ask everyone else to not step to the microphone unless they are that zoning applicant or live within 250 feet and again receive that notice. Anyone who approaches the mic before their time will be compared on the list and if not on the list will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. So please wait until I call on the general public for the zoning items or you will not be called on again for the remainder of the meeting. After all of the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be called upon for germane comments that not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane public comments. For other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments that not to exceed that one minute to a maximum of five minutes per hearing item unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane comments or the comments cease. As a remainder, on the public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, specifications, form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate and lowest bidder designation will be considered germane. All their comments will be considered non-germane. So, let's quickly get started. Our first item tonight in the hearings is on the vacation of City Alley Right of Way located south of and adjoining 2512 Woodland Avenue in a conveyance to Kelly Garner for $75. A is the first consideration of this ordinance. I will ask if anybody from the general public would like to make a germane comment on this particular item. Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 49.
49A and pursuant to Rule 42A, move to waive the second and third reading.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. I'll ask everybody to vote. I vote yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you.
All right, item passes. Thank you all for attending on that one. We will now move to the hearings. First hearing item tonight, of course, will be item 49. And quickly, for the hearings this evening, we have six zoning items, those are 53 through 58. We also have several vacation hearings, a conveyance hearing, one lease purchase hearing, one public improvement hearing, and a couple of other hearings. As a reminder, for the zoning items only, which are again 53 through 58, we will hear the parties in interest first if they wish to speak and then the general public. The parties in interest for the zoning items are the applicant or somebody that lives within 250 feet that has received a notice from the city. After all the parties in interest have commented, we will then open it up for any member of the public for germane comments to aid in the recognizing of the parties in interest who may speak on the zoning items. I will ask everyone else to not step to the microphone unless they are that zoning applicant or live within 250 feet and again receive that notice. Anyone who approaches the mic before their time will be compared on the list and if not on the list will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. So please wait until I call on the general public for the zoning items or you will not be called on again for the remainder of the meeting. After all of the parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be called upon for germane comments that not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes unless the hearing is ended sooner for failure to make germane comments or the comments cease. As a remainder, on the public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, specifications, form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate and lowest bidder designation will be considered germane. All their comments will be considered non-germane. So, let's quickly get started. Our first item tonight in the hearings is on the vacation of City Alley Right of Way located south of and adjoining 2512 Woodland Avenue in a conveyance to Kelly Garner for $75. A is the first consideration of this ordinance. I will ask if anybody from the general public would like to make a germane comment on this particular item. Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 49.
49A and pursuant to Rule 42A, move to waive the second and third reading.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. I'll ask everybody to vote. I vote aye.
Seven yes.
Item 51 is to correct the vacation of Parkland adjacent to the northeast corner of Waveland Golf Course located south of and adjoining University Avenue. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And again, we'll open it to the general public and see if anybody has any germane comments regarding this Parkland adjacent to Waveland Golf Course. Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 51, 51A and pursuant to Rule 42A, move to waive the second and third reading.
I'll second that.
All right, ask everyone to vote. I vote aye.
Seven yes.
That's still.
Item 52, on the conveyance of excess city-owned property at 2754 Payne Road to David Drustrup and Nadia Calistino Vasquez, $25,000 germane comments from the general public at one minute per person. Anybody have any comments on this regarding 2754 Payne Road? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to approve 52.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I vote aye.
Seven yes.
Item 53, is on a request from Hubble Realty Company. Steve Mosley is the officer for property located in the vicinity of 800 Murphy Street to rezone the property from P1 Public Civic and Institutional District to DXR Downtown District to allow development of townhomes. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, we'll ask, are there any parties in interest on this one? This is a zoning item. Seeing none, I'll ask, are there any germane comments from the general public like to be made regarding this?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to move item 53, 53A and pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third readings.
Second.
All right, 53, A and B have been moved and seconded. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 54, is on a request from Quick Trip Corporation. Jason Accord is the officer for property located in the vicinity of 1200 Kiesakwa Way to rezone the property from MX2 Mixed Use District to MX3 Mixed Use District to DXR Downtown District to allow the development of townhomes. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by Michael Durking, who's a member, requires six votes. And we'll ask first, are there any parties in interest, either the applicant or someone within 250 feet of this who received notice from the city? Anyone here? Seeing none, is there anyone from the general public who would like to make germane comments regarding this request? 1200 Kiesakwa.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 54, 54A and 54B.
Second.
54, A and B have been moved and seconded. I vote aye.
Seven yes.
Item 55 is on a request from Forget Properties 2 LLC. Norm Forget is the officer for property located at 4230 Fluor Drive to rezone the property from MX2 Mixed Use District to MX3 Mixed Use District to allow the development of a drive-through for restaurant use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant, requires six votes. Again, we will ask if there's any parties in interest, again, the applicant or anyone within that 250 feet that received notice. Anyone? Seeing none, let's move to the general public. Are there any persons from the general public who would like to make germane comments regarding Item fifty-three, which is on a request from Hubble Realty Company. Steve Mosley is the officer for property located in the vicinity of eight-hundred Murphy Street to rezone the property from P-one Public Civic and Institutional District to DXR Downtown District to allow development of townhomes. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, we'll ask, are there any parties in interest on this one? This is a zoning item. Seeing none, I'll ask, are there any germane comments from the general public like to be made regarding this?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to move item fifty-three, fifty-three A, and pursuant to rule forty-two A, waive the second and third readings.
Second.
All right. Fifty-three A and B have been moved and seconded. Yes.
Seven yes.
Item fifty-four, on a request from Quick Trip Corporation. Jason Accord is the officer for property located in the vicinity of twelve-hundred Kiasakwa Way to rezone the property from MX-two, mixed-use district, to MX-three, mixed-use district, to DXR Downtown District to allow the development of townhomes. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver was requested by Michael Durking, who's a member, requires six votes. And we'll ask first, are there any parties in interest, either the applicant or someone within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of this who received notice from the city? Anyone here? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the general public who would like to make germane comments regarding this request? Twelve-hundred Kiasakwa.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item fifty-four, fifty-four A and fifty-four B.
Second.
Fifty-four A and B have been moved and seconded. I vote yes.
Seven yes.
Item fifty-five is on a request from Forget Properties Two LLC. Norm Forget is the officer for property located at forty-two-thirty Fluor Drive to rezone the property from MX-two, mixed-use district, to MX-three, mixed-use district to allow the development of a drive-through for restaurant use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant, requires six votes. Again, we will ask if there's any parties in interest, again, the applicant or anyone within that two-hundred-and-fifty feet that received notice. Anyone? Seeing none, let's move to the general public. Are there any persons from the general public who would like to make germane comments regarding this property at forty-two-thirty Fluor Drive?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item fifty-five, fifty-five A and fifty-five B.
I'll second.
Fifty-five A and B have been moved and seconded. And I vote yes.
Seven yes.
Item fifty-six is on a request from Forty-twenty-one Properties LLC. Jenny Smith is the officer for property located at forty-nineteen and forty-twenty-one Ingersoll Avenue to amend Plan DSM creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from medium density residential to community mixed use and to rezone the property from NX-two, neighborhood mixed-use district, to RX-two, mixed-use district to allow a two-story building addition for expansion of office use and to continue this item to August eighth of twenty-twenty-two at five o'clock. Again, the motion here, I think, is just to move this to August eighth and to continue the hearing.
I'll make the motion on item fifty-six.
I'll second.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Fifty-seven. It's on a request from Fur Generation LLC. EBITDA's is, and EBITDA's is officer for property located in the vicinity of twenty-seven-eleven and twenty-seven-thirteen Martin Luther King Junior Parkway to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from community mixed use to industrial use to rezone the property from MX-three, mixed-use district, to I-two, industrial district to allow the use of the property as an auto-recycling junk and salvage yard business. Plan and zoning commission recommends denial. We are asked to choose either alternative A or B. A would be to deny, or B is to continue the hearing until August eighth, twenty-twenty-two and direct the legal department to prepare appropriate legislation to rezone. And this requires six votes. Again, are there any parties in interest, either the applicant or anybody within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of this property?
Fooled us.
All right. It looks like we do not have the applicant or anyone who has received it. So I'll open it up and ask if anyone from the general public would like to make germane comments regarding this change in use along Martin Luther King Junior Parkway.
Seeing none. It seems, from my understanding, that the applicant was applying to get a use variance and so was fine with the council denial. I agree with denying this, as I don't think this should be an industrial zoning. And so I will move fifty-seven A.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, and I vote yes.
Seven yes.
To deny. All right. Item fifty-eight. Fifty-eight is on the request from Stony Point Car Wash LLC. Lloyd D. Lynn is the officer for review and approval of a second amendment to the Stony Point PUD conceptual plan on the property located at fifty-nine-oh-one Southeast Fourteenth Street to allow a restaurant with a drive-through use. First, we'll ask, are there any parties in interest, either the applicant or someone within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of this requested zoning? Anyone? All right. Seeing none. Let's see, is there anyone from the general public who would like to make germane comments on this item? Up to one minute per person, seven minutes max.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move to fifty-eight.
Okay. Fifty-eight has been moved. We've got a move and a second. I'd say yes.
Seven yes.
For anyone curious, the restaurant is a Starbucks. So look forward to that.
Fifty-nine is on the proposition to authorize lease purchase agreements in the principal amount not to exceed hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of acquiring certain items of equipment consisting of two Nissan Leaf SUV electric vehicles and one mid-sized SUV vehicle. Anyone from the general public like to make any germane comments regarding this general use? You can do that.
That work? Hello? Hello?
Yeah, we got you.
Cool. So I was just curious what these vehicles were going to be used for.
You want to give us your name? I know we recognize you. We know who you are, but I think the general public would like to know too.
Taylor Weber, Ward Three. So I was just curious what these vehicles were going to get used for. I know we're buying electric vehicles, which is awesome to see, and SUVs. What has me a little bit concerned is on item forty-six, that was on the consent agenda, we were buying sedans and SUVs specifically for use of the undercover cops on the police department, and I'm really disappointed to see that spending on the consent agenda. So I'd really like to know how these vehicles are being used and dispatched in our community.
General manager, you want to make any comment? All right. We'll...
I would like...
I'll move item fifty-nine.
Sorry, no, I would like to hear the answer. If that's okay, sorry.
You'd like to do what?
I would like to hear the answer to the question.
What would particularly be the question? Because we have quite a few departments that would receive vehicles. This is part of our annual replacement of vehicles for all departments.
Were you asking about all vehicles or the electric vehicles?
Specifically, the electric vehicles.
I was specifically asking about these. I didn't figure I was able to ask about the consent agenda.
So specifically on this item, the three electric vehicles?
Blue letter? Yes.
I got the blue letter.
Can we get him the answer after the meeting? Or do we need to have the answer right now?
I just think we should say it publicly if a question was asked publicly.
Okay. Give me a second.
And the public does have access to the blue letter.
Just got to read it. Got to get to the right one first.
I would like to say that I'm glad to see we're making more and more use of electric vehicles, hopefully reducing our carbon emissions.
And our operational costs with gas prices the way they are.
Well, and the maintenance of the vehicles, too, seems to be down over there.
Pull it up. I don't have it.
I'm trying to pull it up here for you.
The blue letter.
Do you have that information, Nick? Thank you.
Assistant of two Nissan Lees, electric vehicles, one that's for lease.
Mayor and council members, this is Nick Shaw, Finance Director at the city. We oversee the, I oversee the fleet division. The three items that we're talking about here are two electric vehicles and one SUV as well. Those three vehicles are going to be used within the police department specifically.
I'll move item fifty-nine.
I'll second.
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Item sixty, which is on a request from Wade Investments LLC for a certificate of appropriateness for Norden Hall at four-twenty-five East Grand Avenue. We'll open this up for the germane comments from the general public. Anyone need to speak about Norden Hall?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item sixty.
Second.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Item sixty-one is on the proposed urban renewal plan for the East Army Post Road Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication number twenty-two-dash-three-forty-seven. A resolution of necessity. Again, any germane comments from the general public regarding the urban renewal plan for East Army Post Road Urban Renewal Area?
I see none, Your Honor. This is, first off, I'd like to thank our staff, Aaron and Chandler and Economic Development for being nimble on this project. Typically, we don't, we don't react as quickly as, as we did for this project. This is a great project for the southeast side. And so without their help and without them getting this to this point right now, they're on a strict construction deadline, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to meet it with, with their help. So I appreciate staff. I'll move sixty-one and sixty-one A.
Second.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Sixty-two is on Tower Park Futsal Court Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder is Berkey Home Builders, Inc., DBA Concrete Professionals. Eric Berkey is the president, one-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Council Communication number twenty-two-dash-three-thirty-seven A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, we'll ask the general public for comments as to the plans, specifications, form of the documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation for germane comments. Allow one minute per person, up to five minutes. Anybody want to speak on this item?
Taylor Weber, Ward Three. I really like this project. It's a great park and a great investment. The youth seem to love the Futsal Courts. I myself am not quite that agile, but also seeing that we were under, on the estimate a bit, and I know that we get some donated lighting and like the Futsal equipment and stuff, but I know in some of the other parks where those exist, it's still not quite enough lighting necessarily late at night or maybe safety reasons, making sure the area to the Futsal Court is well lit as well, if that's the intention is to use it late at night, especially because it's aimed towards kids. I'll just check into that, but I think this is a great addition to Tower Park.
All right. Anyone else?
If there are no more public comments, I would just like to say that I'm excited about this going into Tower Park. I was looking at the plan and, and it's going to be located near the bathroom facilities and other facilities. It's a large Futsal Court, so we have some, some varied sizes, like the small and medium ones. This is going to be more geared towards adults being able to play more of like a full-size game than the smaller Futsal Courts. And that our Futsal Courts have been, been used and, and the programming is going very well, and so I'm excited to see this growing. And I'm excited to see more of these going in. So with that, I'd like to move sixty-two and sixty-two A.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, sixty-two and sixty-two A. I vote yes.
Seven yes.
All right. Let's note that it's five-thirty-two, and the hearings have ended. Let's move back to approving item thirty-two, which Councilmember Mantlebaum, I believe, pulled off, which is terms of an urban renewal development agreement with Exodus Group Investments LC, LLC for the construction of a new distribution light assembly warehouse at seventeen-seventeen East Army Post Road, Council Communication number twenty-two-dash-three-fifty. Councilmember Mantlebaum.
Yeah. So I have no problem with, with the project and, you know, think it will ultimately make a good addition to the south side and be an economic driver. The one thing that I wanted to note is just a general matter. When we are providing incentives, I think it is important that we continue to require energy efficiency above and beyond what the code requires and work to make sure that all of our, the policies that we've been sort of informally putting in place apply to agreements like this. And I didn't see that in this agreement. I think maybe some of that was a timing piece, but my hope is, is that that can be included in the final terms and that we will see that because I think we've done a nice job of incorporating sustainability requirements when it's just, when it's just commercial or industrial type projects, and I want to see us continue to do that and would like to see that here. So that, that's all I wanted to say and make sure that that was sort of called out so that we can be consistent on that and that can be incorporated before the final terms are back in front of us.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I just want to be clear. The developer will be required to participate in the Mid-America Energy Commercial New Construction Program. It's similar to the projects that we did with Waldinger, EP2, ILEX. All of these are large developments. They're, they're required to do the exact same thing as, as all of these. They are going to, the construction group is Estis, and they will be in direct contact with Katie from Mid-America Energy with some of these programs. So staff has did a wonderful job directing Exodus and, and Estis, the construction, to, to make sure that, that these goals that we've implemented as a council and as a community made sure that they're, they're consistent with other projects in the city. I'm happy to move this item thirty-two.
I would like to add on. I think that we need to be incorporating sustainability as a matter of policy in any of our assistance in any, any projects where we're giving assistance. And so I would like to see any energy efficiency things that we can do that are similar to what we've been doing before, but that is a matter of policy that we would need to, I think that we should stay right in stone essentially.
I'll second.
All right. Thirty-two has been moved and seconded. I vote yes.
Six yes, one pass.
All right. That takes us back now to ordinance's second consideration. This is a rezone twelve-ten and twelve-twenty Army Post Road from limited MX-three, mixed-use district to limited MX-three, mixed-use district continued from June twenty-seventh meeting. Counsel, any thoughts on this one?
Do we have the applicant here? I think we had some, some concerns about the property and want to know how those are being addressed.
Good evening. Ed Arp, Civil Engineering Consultants, twenty-four-hundred-eighty-sixth Street, Urbandale, representing the applicant, Tiger Knight. Ms. Barry couldn't be here tonight, so I'm representing him. He's gone through some tasks at the site that he's accomplished to eliminate outdoor storage. I think that was the major point of contention at the last meeting. Really, the action has become down to allowing the upholstery business to be able to work on cars and boat upholstery. That was the change to the restricted, or the restricted or limited use list that we had previously. We just are clarifying that it can be boats and cars that also receive upholstery work. The outdoor storage, though, has been handled.
I question that, and I think we've had, we've had reports there's still a trailer parked back behind there.
This week, or I should say at the end of last week, that was handled. I'm under the impression that enforcement's been by and looked, and they were supposed to have done that today.
I think, I think Mike, I'm asking... I think, I think Mike, I'm asking for clarification. I think Mike's here. So, this is the same, this is the same place where a trailer sat there for almost two years, and enforcement had to force him to move that. And so, we're asking to be able to put boats, and to be able to put cars there, and they're going to work on that. So, all that's going to be working inside? They're going to put the boats inside to work on it?
The boats don't come to the site. Technically, the upholstery is for boats, but the boats aren't there. That's, and if the boats do come there, they don't stay there. They, they're just taking them apart so they can work on them. The trailers, I agree, were there because of the landscaping company that was working out of the building. Mr. Nelson here was here last meeting, and I wasn't, but he misunderstood what the action was going to be. He now knows he can't have those trailers on the property. They can't be stored at night.
So, the boats do come there, or they don't come? They do come there to get taken apart, or they don't come there at all?
I believe the boats can come there so they can take the seats out of the boats.
And then the boat leaves?
Yes. The boats don't, aren't stored there. And I believe, unless I'm wrong, that was discussed at planning and zoning, and was acceptable.
Mike, you want to give us an update?
Mayor of County, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Deputy Director of Development Services. As of this afternoon, the trailers have been moved from the front of the property. There still is one stored in the back in a chain-linked area outside. I guess all I would point out is that whether it's today, or tomorrow, or in the future, there could be a zoning violation on our property, just as there could be anywhere in the city, and we would have to enforce upon that. This zoning was fairly limited, very limited actually, to one additional minor use from what they have on the property today. The staff and the planning commission did recommend approval of the rezoning at that time, and so this ongoing enforcement action, it's just part of any property in the city. We would have to enforce upon it. Tonight's action isn't going to prevent a future violation on the property. There could always be a violation, and we would have to enforce upon it.
But Mike, we're asking for another business. I mean, it just seems like that we're constantly focused specifically on these two addresses, and now we're, now we're asking to have another business come, where, I mean, I'm sorry, if you're going to take a seat out of a boat, do you think they're going to drive their boat back home and then bring the boat there? No, the boat's going to sit out front, and so are the cars that you're going to work on the upholstery, and then we're going to call enforcement, and we're going to get complaints, and then, you know, and then it's going to be a cat and mouse game that we played for the last, I, I, I mean, it's been forever. I mean, a trailer sat there for two years on the site, in the parking lot, on Army Post Road, and enforcement finally was going to have to take him to court, and he finally moved it at that point. Am I correct, or?
Yeah, I can't speak to the court action on it, but we've certainly been in contact with them in the last month since the rezoning was being forward and said the trailers need to be moved from the property.
Yeah, but this isn't, this is more than just, this is the trailers, and then we added a camp, it's just, it's ongoing.
They still have site plan improvements that are required for any existing use under the existing zoning.
That haven't been completed?
They have not completed those improvements.
Right.
So, there are, there is a track record.
How long has the improvements been asked upon to be completed?
I bet it's probably been four, four years.
Oh, at least two.
So, two years they were told to make site plan improvements?
They have the site plan approved.
And they have not made those yet?
They've not confirmed with their site plan yet.
Can you clarify the, the one line of the limited use that we're, as being asked approved, that what we're changing and limited use?
Sure. I don't have the ordinance in front of me. There was red text in the, in the ordinance on the, on the C's website. Basically, it allowed the auto upholstery use, minor auto repair with upholstery. That's the only change to the list of uses allowed on the property.
There's multiple cars that don't move from this parking lot. They're not employee cars. They're just cars that are parked out there. I mean, it's just, it's, it's ongoing. I mean, things, things don't get cleaned up here, and we're going to, we're going to allow them to do more, and I'm fine with giving businesses more opportunities, but I'm not fine giving businesses more opportunities to make it junkier or in our corridor. And I, and I feel like that he's had every opportunity to follow along and not play cat and mouse game with this property, and knowing that he's still coming in front of, you know, and you had to go out there last week to make sure the trailers are gone. I mean, if that doesn't send a clear message of what we're dealing with, I don't know what more I could say. I mean, I'm not going to support any, anything for this. I know it's Josh's ward, but I mean, it's, it's something that I fielded a lot of complaints on, on this corridor. And so, I mean, it's just.
Clearly, the track cracker's not there. I just wanted to clarify that from a staff perspective, if the zoning is not approved, they still have the approval for a landscape company to be there, and there could be trailers in the parking lot, and we will have to enforce on it, continue. Even if you do not approve it, they have zoning today.
Yeah, but we're just asking.
If they store something outside the building, we will have to go in and enforce.
And more cars.
The zoning approves a landscaping company, and we're asking to approve a vehicle upholstery?
Yeah, there is a list of uses permitted. My point is just that even if the zoning is denied, there's a list of uses permitted on the property, and any one of those uses could generate a use violation at some point, and we would have to enforce upon it. Any other questions?
So, knowing the history, it is still staff's recommendation to allow the zoning change?
The recommendation to the planning commission and from the planning commission was to approve the zoning to allow the additional use. I think they've indicated that they've had trouble filling the space. I believe some of the hope was by allowing one additional use, it may allow them to fill the space with tenants and actually get the improvements done to the property that are required for the site plan.
Do you think your zoning enforcement department would have the same recommendation?
I think that's exactly why this has come to the council, because it's not a staff decision on whether there's satisfaction level of the prior actions. That is something that should be decided at this level.
It's been a constant, we're spending a ton of staff time on this particular property with enforcement, and we're going, we're going to continue to do that and just add more things to it, is my point.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Arp. Is it, so is there an identified tenant? Has the building been sitting vacant? And this is going to, what, remind me what exactly?
So, my client bought the building about four years ago. You know, I don't know if you're all familiar, it used to be a printing facility.
Yeah.
Probably the most industrial-looking building on Army Post Road.
But it also was kept clean at that time, when it was a printer.
Absolutely. It's a unique building of construction, and he's trying to get tenants in the building. He's had to do a lot of interior work. He's done work on the backside of the building. It has been an ongoing process. We did have a site plan that was reviewed by the city, but because of changes in zoning, some of them unbeknownst to him, when we adopted the new ordinance, we've gone through several rezoning actions on this property. We thought we were to a point where the tenants he had were within the ordinance, but we realized then technically the upholstery place wasn't because of the boats and cars, and then the trailers. We all know about the trailers. He also had a mobile home that he was placing on a lot directly behind this property. They originally purchased together, and if you probably all remember, that sat there all at least a winter and longer, probably. So, that's been placed now. So, he is moving forward with all these projects that he started. I'm going to say COVID didn't help any. There were just a lot of things that slowed him down, but he's moving forward again. Now, if we don't approve the action tonight, it will just basically mean the upholstery guy won't be able to do boats and cars anymore, and he may just leave the premises. The landscape company, I think, quite frankly, is currently looking for another location, because you got to have trailers if you're going to run a landscape company to haul your moors and everything else on.
But he could pull the trailers inside. He just doesn't want to.
The tenant doesn't want to pay to do that. You know, he'd have to rent more space. So, my client is trying to move ahead and get this cleaned up, and get the property rented, and get the site plan approved, so we can do the streetscapes and everything else that are part of that project. But as Mike has stated, really, the only, the only action tonight is really the upholstery aspect of it. The trailers are just part of the landscape company.
And the upholstery is just an expanded upholstery use. That business exists there. This just means that it can do upholstery on cars and boats. Is that my?
That was my impression, yeah.
Is there an upholstery business there right now?
There is one, there has been one operating there, and that was issued as a zoning violation. So, this zoning is clearing up that, so they can continue to have their tenant in the building.
So, so there's already an upholstery business?
Yeah, it's been operating there in violation of the zoning code. So, this zoning clears that up. If the zoning is not approved, that's, use would have to cease, and they would have to find another tenant, as well as, it sounds like, potentially a different tenant for where the landscaping use is.
So, I guess with all of these, you said that there were multiple uses that were approved. How close are we getting to industrial? Because it kind of seems like we're getting into a situation where the zoning violations would be approved in an industrial zone, and so what's effectively happening on this lot is that it's an industrial, like, the use is industrial, but the zoning is not, and that's where the violations are coming from, and so it doesn't, it wouldn't make sense if we wanted to keep this non-industrial to then approve all of the difference.
I think the key difference is the industrial zoning allows the outdoor storage, and that's what we've been trying to avoid on this property.
Which is what's happening.
Which is what has been happening in violation.
And which, there's concern that would happen, continue happening with the upholstery.
Correct.
It just seems like it's functionally an industrial, industrially zoned area. If, I mean, if we, if there was no enforcement, it would be industrial.
We've been very clear with the applicant that the operations need to be within a building from day one.
But they're not.
But they are not operating in that manner.
Okay.
Counsel, any thoughts?
I mean, if we don't, do we have to, if we don't move it, this just dies for lack of passing on a second and third reading, right? Or would you prefer us to move to deny?
I prefer that there be a motion and second and then vote.
To deny?
You can move to approve, and then everybody votes to deny, and it'll be denied. That way, at least it's been addressed, and there's a conclusion.
Just so everybody, I think, understands, I ought to at least state that the uses that are prohibited on this property right now are animal boarding, a bar, bail bonds, delayed deposit services, pawn brokers, sign, general advertising billboard, whatever, vehicle sales, service category, including fuel station, vehicle sales, vehicle rental, vehicle maintenance and repair, with a minor exception.
We'd be approving.
Which I think we're looking at now, which is automotive upholstery and automotive detailing, uses are permitted, but anything that involves the sale and service of alcohol, wine or beer is prohibited. So, not a lot of options.
Mr. Mayor, there's some big garage doors in there where they can be doing the work inside or pulling the trailers inside, and they've chosen not to do that, and I'm not sure why they've chosen not to do that. But there is a way to keep that, keep that building so it doesn't look so trashy.
I understand. I just think everybody ought to understand.
Yeah, no, I understand, and trust me, I wish that, you know, we were all in. He was, I mean, we're chasing, it's a cat and mouse game. I mean, in, I mean, you talk to the zoning enforcers, I mean, they're, they're constantly having to harp on, on this particular property when we've got other properties throughout the city that probably need attention. And, you know, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, and, you know, I'm not sure why, if the owner's going to bring something like this in front of us, I'm not sure why he wouldn't have been on his best behavior the last few months, but he sure just doesn't care.
I will also say, with mixed use, there's a lot of things that aren't permitted, but those are generally like industrial use or pawn broker, like bail bonds, you know, not a big fan of some of those, but there are a lot of uses that would be appropriate, like retail, or a restaurant that didn't have, that didn't have alcohol served. And so, it seems to me like the risk that we run not allowing this rezoning is that the current tenants might move, but that because the use that they want to do is industrial, it sounds to me like that would be appropriate for them to continue in the way that they have been operating in an industrial zone, and we've been pretty consistent with asking industrial use to be in industrial zones.
I mean, it literally was a printer shop for over 20 years. I know, I know the man that built that. It was a clean piece of property. It was kept very nice, and I think a printer would probably be considered industrial, wouldn't it? I mean, I don't know, I would consider that an industrial use, and we never had that type of problem from Mr. Benson's printer shop that was there. And so, I, I mean, there's ways to use this building if, if an owner wants to be responsible. I just feel like he's thumbing his nose at us, and, you know, he's only coming to us because the enforcement has gone to him many times. That's probably why he's not here in front of the podium.
I would agree. I just have a problem with, with giving a change of zoning on somebody that's been not as cooperative as probably you could, and try to go after a different type of businesses that are more reflective of what we're asking to be in the corridors right now. That's why we had changed a lot of the zoning, I believe, and we shouldn't have to have code enforcement telling them after we had a meeting what a month ago that we have it still issues, so I can't support.
I would either vote to deny, or I would vote no on the approval. Doesn't really matter to me either way.
But.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah. So, I will move this item, and I will plan on voting to deny, but I will move the item.
I'll second it.
So, Mr. Attorney, would a no vote then be to deny?
Yes.
No vote, would not approve the rezoning.
Okay.
He moved to approve it. We're all, if we all vote no, or four, four of us vote no, then it's denied.
Do we vote again?
I vote no. Seven, no.
We'll see if we'll get something else in there.
Okay.
We're someone that would listen.
Okay, we'll move on. Ordinance's first consideration, amending chapter 98-55 relating to charges for solid waste collection services and fee reduction for renters participating in the State of Iowa Rent Reimbursement Program. A is the final consideration. The ordinance above the waivers requested by Jonathan Gano, our Public Works Department Director, requires six votes. Council Communication Number 22-340. Counsel, any thoughts here?
I had a, just a question about this. We, when we were talking this morning, we were talking about item 65, not item 64. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is, I guess I.
This is something different.
Yeah, is there just like a very quick summary, like for the rental reimbursement?
This expands the ability for some of our rental housing residents to partake in a reduction in their, their garbage.
From the State of Iowa.
The definition of who gets that discount has been expanded.
Okay. So, this would be for renters who are paying for their own garbage, not, or also landlords who are paying for the garbage?
No, it'd be tenants paying for it, get to pay a lower amount.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, that is correct. I'll move. This is a good program. I was happy to see this. I'll move item 64 and 64A.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, 64, 64A. I vote yes. Seven, zero.
I don't think we heard Laura.
I think it might.
Seven, yes, sorry.
That's why I said it. Did you not hear me? Did you not hear me?
I did. I didn't hear the count.
Item 65, amending Chapter 118, Article 3 of the Municipal Code relating to the regulation of industrial wastewater and commercial wastewater, Council Communication Number 22-326. Item A, and as a final consideration, the ordinance above the waivers requested by Jonathan Gano, our Public Works Director, requires six votes. And B is amending the schedule of administrative penalties regulating hauled waste, wriggling fat, oil, grease discharge by food service establishments. And as Councilmember Shoemaker mentioned a minute ago, this was part of our discussion earlier this morning. So, any follow-up thoughts or a motion?
I'll move 65A and B.
Second.
All right.
Seven, yes.
And, well, we can't see her at the moment. Item 66 is approving the appointment of Laura Baumgartner as our city clerk.
As part of the Personnel Committee, I want to move that we approve appointment of Laura Baumgartner as our city clerk. As we all know, she's been with us for a long time, and we appreciate her service and look forward to her holding this position.
I'll second, but I think with the condition, we get her out in front here so we can apply after we vote.
I would like to make a, just a clarifying comment for the public. I think there has been, just, just for more awareness about the process, when Kay announced her retirement, we started looking for a new clerk. There were multiple candidates. Laura was the most qualified, partially given that she had been with the city and so knows all of our processes and programs. And that is why we chose to appoint her as the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, just like to thank the three of you on the Personnel Committee. And I know our former city clerk is in the crowd that Laura had worked under for many, many years, and I'm happy, happy to, to, to vote for this. I'm glad, I'm glad at Laura. I agree with Carl. We need to get them back out here, so hopefully in August.
Yeah, they'll be coming out.
We'll be able to, to get them back out here in front, so.
Ah, but at this meeting, yeah.
Oh, you're, you're talking about right now?
Yeah.
Let's not, let's not make her uncomfortable if she doesn't want to come out.
I'm talking about in general, sitting back in these two seats.
Laura, can you take a quick peek out, please?
Sorry, I thought Carl said after.
All right. Let's give her a big hand. And I want to say, not only are past city clerk that's sitting in the audience, but also Kay also very highly recommended Laura for this position. So she got great references all the way around. So Laura, thank you so much. Look forward to working with you.
We gotta vote, we gotta vote now, though.
We do have to vote.
Get back to work.
Oh, God.
All right, could we have a motion?
I think it's been, it's been moved and seconded, yeah.
Okay, yes.
We got it. It was a while ago. Seven, yes.
Yay.
All right, we're going to move on now to our communications reports and requests to speak from our citizens. Our first speaker this evening is Jolene Prescott.
Hi, I'm Jolene Prescott. I live at 3013 Third Street. And Indira, I am glad you're back, because a few weeks ago, you said something about not wanting to have security down there, where you have to have that security checkpoint, and you had a problem with someone having their purse looked through. Well, yes, you did. And do you know how easy it would be if we didn't have that down there for someone to bring a weapon in here? Have you thought about that? There, it is important, because they're trying to protect you, and 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 me too. It happens that quick, honey. We have to have security down there. Now, if your vendetta against the police is going to get in, in the way, if it's going to get in the way of security.
She shouldn't be allowed to address another council member like that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That is not okay for any of us up here. There, there's no reason to personally attack anyone sitting up here. She's trying to do her job. That's not okay.
Well.
That's her own personal opinion, but you don't need to single her out. That's not okay. I'm sorry.
I'm fine. You guys need to think about, too.
Yeah, all the time. You know what? It's not right.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to stop, too. Thank you. Adam Kellinann.
Adam Kellinann, he had Ward 3, content warning for police violence. Two DMPP officers, Peter Wilson and Jeffrey George, recently filed civil lawsuits against six protesters from July 1, 2020. On July 1, DMPP and the Iowa State Patrol claimed they had warrants and then proceeded unlawfully detained certain protesters to the Iowa Capitol, resulting in Capitol bans where several protesters were banned from their own state Capitol. These bans were unconstitutional and were overturned by the courts because of that. While the civil suit is brought by two individual cops, not the city proper, the city is still ultimately responsible, because the cops are city employees who were working for the city at the time in question. The cops are using city resources through their jobs to bring these suits forward. The cops can only do this because they have reason to believe the city will protect them. That's because the city councils, the city and the council's inability to criticize DMPP and the city's silencing of DMPP critics. The city is still fighting lawsuits from other protesters who are abused by DMPP during 2020 as well. These cops are managed by Chief Winger, who is managed by City Manager Scott Sanders, who is managed by the council. In this filing, in the court filing, the cops claimed in writing that they feel racial justice protesters were engaged in domestic terrorism. We are not safe when our police force refers to residents this way as enemy combatants. The department cannot feasibly claim to offer public safety to people that it views this way. A lot of us know that DMPP considers protesters as terrorists, but now it's actually admitted in a court filing. It's not just something that we kind of think. They've actually admitted it. The city often allocates lots of money to anti-terrorism projects in Des Moines and further out in Iowa. And myself and others have opposed these, because we know that when DMPP looks at terrorism, they're looking at residents of Des Moines, my neighbors, and especially black folks. The city has terminated a private security contract with Conley, in part because their CEO communicated with Chief Winger calling protesters terrorists. Winger faced no discipline for this, and it appears that our standard of private security is higher than our standard for police officers. DMPP abuses their power. The most direct way to take some of that power away from them is by taking some of the funding and moving it into community programs that would prevent violence and harm. We need to defund DMPP, fire Sanders, and fire Winger.
Taylor Weber, Ward 3. Yeah, echo Adam's comments and concerns. It's all super valid. It's really difficult to watch that happen, because us as citizens, if we felt we were harmed by police officers in the interaction with them, we couldn't do anything about it. We're not allowed to sue them. We can't hold them accountable for their actions. And as you guys have shown when it comes to their budget, you won't either. Connie, I was pretty disappointed to see you making some comments about we need to pay off-duty police officers more money and more overtime to enforce fireworks. It seems like they were absent and not enforcing it at all, based on listening to the tracker of what calls are coming in versus what they ticketed. Paying off-duty police officers is just paying overtime to cops. I would also like to say, it seems, it's really disappointing that we didn't have on the item in question where you purchased two Nissan Leafs, nowhere in any of the linking that the public could be aware of what those vehicles were being used for, even though on the item on the consent agenda, you explicitly say you're buying police undercover vehicles there. So I would encourage you to get with staff and make sure you're publicly allocating the resources so that we can inform the public properly on what's going on. Second, I guess lastly, I would really, just on that item that Adam brought up, that civil suit, I have yet to hear a comment from anyone else standing up and saying any attacks against Indira by other city employees or defending her. In fact, I've heard to the contrary, where Frank is saying that she isn't doing a good enough job representing her community while she was out. And that's really disappointing to hear you guys all going and targeting one of your own colleagues. So I think you should do better.
Sam Davis.
Hello, I'm at 1807 Southwest Second, and I'm going to quickly address three things. One is the noise ordinance. What if you allowed patrols who don't carry decibel meters, a method to keep folks from repeatedly disturbing the peace? Simplify it. It doesn't have to take, it doesn't take a meter to know when something is too loud. We need to be able to hear what's going on around us, be outside without being scared by fireworks, mufflers, radios, and hurt. Over 85 decibels causes hearing damage. And maybe quiet vehicles aren't as much fun. Too speed. Two, motorcycle parking. For some reason, our roads don't have shoulders. It's a white line, if we're lucky, and then a curb or a ditch. Sidewalks are for pedestrians, and sometimes bicycles go on them, too, because there are no shoulders to ride safely on the street. Motorcycles are parking on sidewalks. It happens repeatedly. If there isn't a law that says we can't park on sidewalks, maybe there should be, or maybe it's time to enforce it. Third one, I'm going to start with a story. Once upon a time, I was late for work because elephants were making their way from a train to a circus. Obviously, elephants aren't allowed on the streets. It was downtown Minneapolis, but, you know, they didn't have any other option. We had to see them at the circus. And I don't have elephants going back and forth in front of my house, but they'd be less intrusive than the forklifts I do have. Instead of maintaining the route used for decades to haul pallets between two warehouses, the business across the street from me decided to start using my street daily and repeatedly. But, and obviously forklifts aren't meant for streets, but Des Moines officials say forklifts don't occur in city ordinances, bylaws, regulations, et cetera, nor I'm sure do elephants. Therefore, my neighborhood turned into a commercial loading zone because the company is too cheap to fix their driveway. So ignoring these small things leads to bigger things and leads to many copycats. Parking illegally, intentionally disturbing the peace, being defiant on all laws, it's not the Des Moines I want to live in, and I think we can do better.
Mayor, council members, Viola Perry, CCI Racial Justice Team, Ward 1. We shall not be moved. It's a black spiritual not only sung in black churches, but at protests all around the country. Now, this song resonates with our work, our community with message, a message to let you know, we remain steadfast like a tree planted by the water, and we shall not be moved. CCI Racial Justice Team shall not be moved, and I will call for a third-party independent investigation of the Des Moines Police Department. Now, despite the bells and whistles of distractions and deflections, the promotions and the recent commotions, this request only makes sense and is long past due. I want to reiterate the racial profiling of DWBs that is driving while black, overly aggressive police tactics resulting in a payout of just over a million dollars so far. Also, reported sexual harassment within the police department continues to be issues of concern, prompting our request for this department to be investigated. Like that tree planted by the waters, we shall not be moved on the third-party investigation of DMPP. And Councilwoman Shoemaker, along with other council members that have willingly worked with us, let us hope you too will be like that tree planted by the rolling, boiling waters. You will not be moved and continue to work with our community with that much needed change in Des Moines. Oh, wait a minute, I might add, I believe we were told these issues would be on the agenda. It's not there. So we want to see these next time. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor, Laurel Clinton, Des Moines. I'm a member of the CCI Racial Justice Team. Since 2018, we've come here to the city for the first, the last four years to represent our community and help to develop a partnership with you. With our help in 2020, you guys passed the racial justice ordinance. We know that there's much more work to be done. Since 2020, we've had the displeasure of exposing some egregious acts of misconduct by our police department. Those actions resulted in many of the concerns and why we're here and continue to show up. We'll continue to push for a third-party independent investigation of the Des Moines Police Department, primarily for the safety of our city. It took a woman to lead the charge about an investigation that represents our city. It's a scandal. I couldn't very well tell some of my nieces or friends of my family to come to this police department as female officers, because I don't know that they'll be safe. But we continue to show up, and we continue to push. And we've met with some resistance and pushed back. But I want to say that I appreciate Connie and Josh and Carl and Indira, sorry, for sticking with this consistently and meeting with this, because we come because we want our city to be better. We're not here to fight with you to make it worse. We're trying to make it better. And Scott Sanders, I hope that your schedule clears up so that we can continue the progress that we began earlier this year. Thank you, and have a good evening.
All right, could we have a motion to receive and file our citizen comments?
I'll make a motion, receive and file.
If I could make a comment.
67A through G, and then you can make a comment.
Thank you.
I have a second.
I'll second. Okay, if I could just make a comment about, I appreciate being stood up for. I also want to acknowledge that we are all public, publicly employed officials, and people have every right to make comments about what policies we support, including whether or not we believe security should be at City Hall. People are allowed to, to say pretty much whatever they want about us. They're legally allowed to do that. So while it may be uncomfortable, if they don't say it here, they're going to say it somewhere else anyway, and that, that's happening pretty much everywhere. So I don't mind if people want to come here and make negative comments about, about, about me, or about my policies, or anything like that. That's absolutely their right. And I'll leave it at that. I'll go ahead and second that motion. Or, it was already seconded, sorry. Never mind, I'll withdraw my second.
Is there a voice vote?
We got buttons.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous. Thank you for citizen input. We have one extra item. It's directing our city attorney to research and provide council confidential advice regarding the legal ability of the city to regulate certain home-based sales. The mayor pro tem and I sponsored this item. Josh, you want to make a comment?
So this comes, there is a separate zoning board of adjustment action that will work itself through the process about gun sales out of homes, but that has prompted a number of constituents in the third ward to raise questions about what we can do as a city from a zoning perspective and to, to address that. And, you know, we've had some conversations, and I know we're pretty limited by the preemption bills up at the state, but given the current, current issue, I think this is a fair time to revisit this question and get some advice. this question and get some advice from our legal counsel on what options we may have, and if we don't have options because of state law, we'll be able to let folks know that and maybe direct efforts that change towards where they need to happen. And so that's the purpose and origin of this, and it's a way to provide folks an outlet, hopefully, for the concerns that they have and that we are hearing, and so I'm happy to move extra item one.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Seven yes.
And with that, could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This means adjourned for everybody, there is a special council meeting on Wednesday, at what time?
Four o'clock, 4:30?
Wednesday?
I think it's 4:30.
Special council meeting, Wednesday, 4:30. Thank you all for attending.